Good morning. It's Tuesday, January 14th. You're at the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the infocation afterwards by Father Brian Dawson with the St. Paul's Episcopal Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this opportunity. I am Brian Dawson. It is six months to the day since I got on a plane in New Zealand to shift to the other side of the world out of a sudden burst of insanity and become the Director of St. Paul's Episcopal Church, the best job in the world, I promise you. A reminder maybe that sometimes we have to do crazy things to get good outcomes. We pray. Creator of the universe, we thank you for this day and the call to govern that rests on these men of service. Give them ears to hear and hearts to care, that all decisions made may work for good and be a blessing to all in hope and faith, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father, for that prayer. You weren't lying on the shortness of it. First up is a presentation update on the Stanislas County Sheriff's Office Correctional Investigation Unit. Sheriff Dursley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Having this presentation, as you know, it's kind of our habit to do something roughly once a quarter. And this is a topic that I don't believe you've ever really heard or maybe even have a lot on your radar. So a few years back, we formed CIU, our Corrections Investigations Unit, and we are one of, actually, a very few number of sheriff's offices up and down the state that have a unit that is dedicated to investigating problems inside of the jail. And it has paid huge dividends for us, both in protecting our staff and protecting our inmates and making good cases that keep the peace specifically inside of our facility. So I'm going to stop here and turn it over to Lieutenant Pedro Beltran and let him take it away. And we will, of course, be happy to entertain any questions you may have. So, thank you. Pedro?
Good morning, everybody. I'm grateful for this opportunity to present on an update on the Correctional Investigative Unit. My name is Pedro Beltran. As Sheriff of Dursley, I'm a Lieutenant for the Stanislas County Sheriff's Department and the Adult Detention Division. Currently, I'm assigned to the Bureau of Administrative Services, where I oversee five key areas: administration, training, scheduling, the classification unit, and of course, what we're here to talk about today, the Correctional Investigative Unit. Today's presentation aims to update you on the CIU's critical role in improving safety and security within our correctional system. We'll also discuss the unit's challenges, responsibilities, and key achievements. Our county jail's function has a community within a broader county. Like any community, our jails consist of individuals who live and interact with shared spaces, including incarcerated individuals, staff, and administrators. The self-contained community has its own structures, cultures, and challenges, such as maintaining safety, managing relationships, and providing essential services. Our county jails are made up of four facilities with an average daily population of about 1,450 incarcerated individuals. The Board of Supervisors' priority area of supporting a strong and safe community extends to the jail environment as well. Ensuring the safety, security, and rehabilitation of incarcerated individuals plays a key role in contributing to the broader safety of the entire county. The Sheriff's Department mission of building trust, reducing crime, and building safety applies to jails just as much as it does to the neighborhoods we serve. Jails provide essential programs and services aimed at reducing recidivism and supporting rehabilitation, which aims with our overarching goals of prevention and education. The work of jail staff, including the Correctional Investigative Unit, reinforces safety and accountability, closely mirroring the core objectives of our mission. Our comprehensive programs are designed to foster rehabilitation, reduce recidivism, and promote positive change within and beyond the jail environment. These efforts reflect our commitment to a safer and more rehabilitative approach to incarceration, with the broader goal of reducing crime and improving public safety. With over 1,450 incarcerated individuals at any given day, and more than 300 sworn deputies alongside clerical, medical, and support staff, our jails represent a community of more than 2,000 people. This diverse and complex jail community requires not only safety and order, but also protection from internal threats, such as gangs, drugs, and violence. Ensuring that we maintain control over these challenges is vital to the well-being of everyone Maintaining safety in our jails presents three primary challenges: illegal drugs, gang activity, and violence. There are many ways drugs are smuggled into jails, which we're going to be covering later on in the presentation. Access to illegal drugs fuels a range of illegal activities, addiction, and increased violence within the jail environment. Drugs inside the jails are worth five to 10 times more than on the streets, making them a high-value commodity and significant driver of criminal activity. Unfortunately, at times, overdoses from illegal drugs have led to trips to emergency rooms outside of facilities. Gangs continue to be a major threat within the jails. Many incarcerated individuals are affiliated with gangs, which leads to organized criminal activity, violence, and the continuation of gang culture in our jails. Gang members often control the smuggling of contraband, engage in extortion, and are responsible for attacks on rival groups or individuals. Violence between incarcerated individuals is unfortunately common, including assaults, stabbings, and even assaults against staff. This violence is often linked to gang rivalries, personal conflicts, or the competition over contraband. These three major challenges, illegal drugs, gang activity, and violence, significantly impact the operations of our facilities. They compromise jail safety and security and often intersect, compounding their effects, making the work of keeping our jails secure even more complex. One of the primary challenges we face in contraband being smuggled into the jail during the intake process. Most drugs and weapons are concealed by individuals at the time of their arrest or during scheduled surrender dates, when they turn themselves in. Our 2024 year-to-date data, as you see on the screen, highlights the weapons and drug seizures made during intake. I'd like to take a moment to commend our arresting agencies for their outstanding work in identifying contraband before individuals even reach the jail. However, due to the controlled environment and additional tools we have at our disposal, our staff detect more things. We utilize several advanced tools to enhance our intake process, including, for not limited to, the TechA4 Body Scanner, which you see there on the bottom left, which identifies concealed items, anomalies on individuals, the Trunark Laser Drug Identification Machine, which allows for quick drug detection and identification. And when necessary, we also have the ability to conduct a thorough unclothed body search. These tools, combined with double search protocols, ensure we maintain the highest level of security and safety within our facility and everyone within it. Our team is always ready to assist during the intake process to support our arresting partners and further strengthen our collective efforts in keeping contraband out of the Mail is another way that they attempt to smuggle drugs into our jail community: the U.S. Postal Service Paper Mail. This chart shows incidents across our four facilities highlighting attempts to smuggle drugs, like heroin hidden behind the stamps at the top left, some boxing strips behind Another common method is meth or ecstasy dip paper. With approximately 100 pieces of mail processed daily, this remains a significant challenge. However, we are preparing to implement a digital mail system soon, which will drastically reduce the risk of contraband entering through this method. Our jail perimeters are frequently tested by individuals attempting to smuggle drugs into our facilities. Several cases have been successfully prosecuted, and a few examples are shown on the screen. On the top left, you'll see a failed attempt to throw contraband over the perimeter fence. Bottom right, you'll see a failed attempt to deliver drugs to our worker population through the laundry. There's been several other cases with successful prosecutions of conspiracy to deliver drugs into the jail. Overall crimes in the jail, in 2024, we have 201 documented crime reports. The majority, 126, involve smuggling, followed by a close second by 34 battery reports. Now that I've outlined some of the challenges we face, I'll discuss how the Corrections Investigative Unit works to address and combat these issues effectively. The primary responsibility of CIU is to gather intelligence, conduct threat assessments, and special investigations on issues that may impact the safety and security of our jail facilities. Major issues such as illegal drugs, gangs, semi-violence, and staff assaults are number one priorities. There you see some examples, small examples of confiscated drugs, weapons, and some intelligence. Brief history of the CIU. CIU staff was established in September of 2021, following a reorganization of existing roles. Prior to the restructuring, we had two gang intelligence officers and one K-9 handler. The reorganization expanded the team by adding an additional K-9 handler, a crime analyst, and in October of '22, a dedicated supervisor or sergeant position. I'd like to give you a quick overview of the duties and roles within our unit. First, we have our custodial K-9 handlers, who are experts in narcotics. These teams utilize highly-trained K-9s to detect drugs and other contraband within the facility, ensuring that we maintain a safe, controlled environment. Next are gang intelligence deputies. They specialize in all things gang-related. They monitor gang activities and work proactively to prevent gang-related incidents, helping to keep the peace and security within the facility. Our crime analyst plays a crucial role in the team. The crime analyst collects, analyzes, disseminates information, organizes it in a way that is easily understandable for the rest of the team. The analyst also serves as a centralized point of contact, ensuring that investigators and other staff can access vital jail information systems when needed. Our unit supervisor, who's to my right today, is a sergeant responsible for the daily supervision of our CIU team. This individual ensures that everything runs smoothly and the unit stays on task. CIU staff members are also subject matter experts. Not only do they provide vital insights within their own fields, but they also help educate other staff members through in-service training sessions, ensuring that everyone is up to date on the best practices. Finally, I want to highlight an important aspect of CIU's work: proactive problem solving. Traditionally, staff in the jails have focused on responding to crimes after it occurs, addressing the immediate aftermath. Now with CIU, however, we take a proactive approach. We work to prevent crimes before they happen by identifying potential causes and risks, verifying, ensuring the safety and security of everyone in the facility. This is a snapshot of 2024 year-to-date CIU cases. Earlier, we reviewed total crime categories of 2024, which amounted to 201 total crimes. Of those, CIU was involved in 93 cases, which accounts for approximately 46% of all of them. The largest number of cases involving drug smuggling was little-known suspect information since those involved in the paper mail. While I can't delve into the specifics due to the sensitive nature of the investigation methods involved, I do want to emphasize the importance of this work. It's also worth noting that the major cases CIU handles have a high conviction success rate, largely thanks to excellent partnership and collaboration with the sheriff's patrol investigators and the district attorney's office. Many of CIU cases are strategically used to strengthen the DA's leverage in incoming legal matters, ensuring that justice is served. This is the overall snapshot of our stats since 2021. In terms of cases, the unit has made significant strides. There have been 112 arrests and rebookings. Conviction rate stands at impressively 83%. When it comes to seizure, CIU has played a key role in maintaining facility security. Forty-one weapons have been seized, a total of 758 pieces of mail, which have been identified and intercepted from coming into the jails. 422 intercepted Wila's, which are also known as mini-gang writings used to communicate with the gangs. In terms of facility searches, the team has been diligent in their efforts. 5,742 cell searches have been conducted. 1,281 packed-clothed body searches were carried out, and additionally, 1,063 unclothed body searches were performed. Finally, intelligence gathering has been a cornerstone of CIU's work. The team has conducted 637 interviews. They have also monitored 54,904 phone calls, providing crucial information for ongoing investigations. These stats reflect the hard work and dedication of the CIU team in safeguarding the facility and supporting ongoing investigations. Part of CIU is also CIU K-9 deputies, which we described earlier. I'll take a look at some stats from the K-9. First, the sample of K-9 alerts by drug type on the left and the locations where the alerts occurred since 2021. This chart highlights the significant role of our K-9 units that have played. As of 2024 year-to-date, our K-9s have been utilized 367 times. This represents a consistent, reliable effort to find and intercept contraband. Thanks to the expertise of our K-9 officers, we've been able to recover a variety of illicit substances and materials, significantly contributing to the safety and integrity of the facility. Collaboration is big with CIU. Relations have been key factors in the development and success of CIU. By becoming a valuable resource for addressing jailhouse politics, incidents, and internal systems, CIU has built vital connections with our organization and with external agencies. Collaboration within our own department has been crucial. For example, we have two CIU gang deputies embedded with our Special Investigations Unit on patrol. These deputies report to SIU for part of their work week, which ensures that information flows smoothly between the two units, enhancing our overall effectiveness. Collaboration with outside agencies has also been a cornerstone of our success. CIU works closely with various law enforcement gang units and networks, strengthening our capabilities and widening our reach. One collaboration I'd like to highlight is the collaboration with the District Attorney's Office. CIU has developed a strong working relationship with Deputy District Attorney Hogan, who has been instrumental in prosecuting gang-related crimes in our jails. As part of our partnership, the DA has issued a new policy, which you see there on the screen. Plea deals no longer be offered to individuals involved in gang assaults. This policy has been posted throughout the jails to ensure everyone is aware. Additionally, DDA Hogan has provided valuable training on gang activity and jail assaults for our staff, equipping them with the knowledge needed to address these issues more effectively. These collaborations are a testament to how strong partnerships can help drive success and improve the safety and security of our facilities. Moving on to the jail slash street collaboration, we want to highlight how criminal activity does not end when individuals enter the jail. This slide illustrates the ongoing collaboration with outside agencies and show how criminal behavior inside the jail can be connected to crimes on the streets. CIU is not only focused on activities inside the jail, but also plays a crucial role in supporting street operations. We develop vital information from within the jails that can directly lead to operations on the streets. The seamless flow of information between the streets and the jail strengthens our ability to combat criminal activity at both levels, ensuring that justice continues even beyond the jail walls. Future of CIU. The CIU only has been in operation for three years, but we already have significant plans and place to grow and enhance our effectiveness. We are currently in the process of adding a patrol detective to boost our overall capabilities, which will strengthen our operational reach. Looking into the future, we plan to expand our K-9 teams by adding additional handlers, which will further improve our narcotic detention and security efforts. We're also adopting new technologies, which we talked about a little bit earlier, with digital mail systems, to reduce the flow of illegal drugs sent through the U.S. Postal Service Paper Mail. This initiative is already in progress. Additionally, CIU will continue to be the subject matter experts for the training and development of our adult detention staff, ensuring that they stay equipped with the knowledge and skills needed to maintain safety and security. Lastly, we will continue to expand our collaboration initiatives and track performance metrics to measure our success and refine our strategies. These initiatives reflect our commitment to growth, innovation, and continued success in safeguarding our facilities and contributing to broader law enforcement efforts. In closing, I hope this presentation has clarified the critical role of the CIU and the value it brings, both in the correctional system and the broader community. This includes our update on how CIU enhances safety and accountability and operational effectiveness with the facility. We're committed to addressing the issues that support a strong and safe community, both inside and outside the jails. Thank you for your time and continued support. I'm happy to address any feedback or questions you may have.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Bring it back to the board. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Lieutenant, the dogs, obviously, are probably the single best thing you can do, right, in walking through. It shows 5,700, I don't remember the statistics specifically, searches. How often are the dogs walking through the cells?
The dogs, they try to go through daily, on a daily basis. The proactive way of searching, they cannot search around the incarcerated people, so that's the difference there. They bring them by when we do searches of cells and special operations, but the perimeter is daily, certain areas that are accessed to the outside on a daily.
Yeah. And then when you go through the airport, you got the little dogs that can sniff for fruit, illegal fruit, or whatever it might be, just walking around as a deterrent for people to, it seems like it, but interesting. I think the single greatest deterrent, again, on the exterior, makes sense, people trying to throw it in.
If I could add one other thing, too, on the dogs. To be clear, the dogs that work in the jail are not apprehension dogs. That's actually illegal. They are only detection dogs. So you saw, which one was up there? Oliver, Moose?
Yeah.
They're labs, and so one of them is a very friendly lab, and one of them is less so. But they're not apprehension dogs. I just want to point that out as well. That's not legal.
Great presentation, Lieutenant Sergeant. Thank you, guys, and Jeff, thank you for doing this. Explain to me just real quick the Wila's again, that 420, I didn't catch that.
So in the gang culture inside the jails, there's a way they communicate with each other. They write in like a mini-scroll. They write, their writing is very small into a piece of paper, and they scroll it, and then they hide it within certain areas, and that's how they communicate with each other.
Just within the jail, not outside of the jail?
Within the jail, yes.
Okay. And then the other thing, that's great, thank you. And then the other thing you talked about, which if you could just expand a little bit on, we talked about inside and outside the jail, and just how much of that's going on as far as criminal activity inside the jail, maybe involved in criminal activity outside the jail? If you could just kind of expand on that a little bit.
Well, typically, how we put it is, you know, criminal activity doesn't end once they come into the jail. Sometimes they have things that they're involved with outside that they continue to be involved with while they're inside the jail. So our job is to detect that activity and help our partners on the street.
Yeah. And I think that's critical because it really helps, you know, if we think, oh, somebody's been arrested, they're locked up, that's it, it's over. It's not. There's still a lot of things that are going on outside that possibly they're still controlling, they're still involved in. And so to the extent you guys have this unit to work on that, I think it's great for the community, over and above just housing these individuals. So, anyway, thank you, guys. Great presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Lieutenant Sergeant, thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation. How much is controlled totally by the gangs? I know there's probably some individuals that try to sneak something through, or they assault somebody, but I would have to imagine most, or the majority of what occurs inside your jail is totally gang-controlled.
Yes, a lot of it is. My expert just walked away, I guess he thought it was done. So I'm going to tap dance for a minute, but no, a lot of it is, and specifically in our region, we have mostly Nortenos and Sirenios are the two gangs that are prevalent in our region. We do have others, Hells Angels and a few others, but the Nortenos and the Sirenios are the most prevalent, and within their spheres of influence, they pretty much call all the shots. And so when they talk about this idea of gang intelligence specifically, part of the task is figuring out who those shot callers are, who the ones are that are making the decisions directing the gang activity, whether it's bringing in contraband drugs specifically or, you know, directing assaults, removals, which is when somebody gets removed from the gang, which is typically fairly violent. That is almost solely controlled by the gangs. And almost everyone who comes into custody, not all, but most, typically will house with someone, right? So part of our intake process goes through a series of questions in order to determine kind of what they affiliate with. And at some level, I, Nortenos, Sirenios, white gangs, which go by the clever name of Peckerwood, you know, Hells Angels, et cetera, because almost everybody will ultimately house or, you know, associate with someone. There are not that many folks that are completely unaffiliated in any way. So I would just like to take the opportunity, too, to thank Pedro and Larry Cupid, the sergeant, and the whole team, because we are truly cutting-edge. Sergeant Cupid and the analyst came to state sheriffs, we have an intel committee, an analyst committee, that I chair, but they came down and gave a presentation, a more in-depth version of what you all just received, and it is really kind of setting the standard for the state. When you have counties like Orange County, which are incredibly advanced in their technology and their processes, reaching out to us, like, hey, how did you guys do that? That is a good thing. So these guys are doing some amazing work. And, you know, kind of from where I sit as the sheriff, you know, when it comes to the jail side of things, you know, we always look to limit liability, right? When we talk about drugs coming into the facilities, overdose deaths or incidents is obviously a situation that creates extreme liability for us. So the more of that we can prevent proactively, the better it is for our county as a whole.
Thank you, Sheriff. Great presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You'll have it, and you can ask it during public comment. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record. Direct all comments towards the dais, and so it is fair for every speaker. Keep comments to the five-minute time limit. In order of received, first I have Brandon Kirkbride.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Kirkbride. I'm here on behalf of the SSDA, or Stanislas Sworn Deputies Association. I want to kind of piggyback off the presentation you just saw and say that accomplishment and everything that was able to have been done there was done by deputies. I do not represent the Custodial Deputies Association. I work with them closely every day. I work with Sergeant Larry Cupid on our dive team. I know that they, to get back to the reason I'm here, they are understaffed, just like our association. They need to hire and retain deputies, just like my association does, and the presentation you just saw is some of the things that they can accomplish that we can accomplish with the people, with the manpower. So back to the main reason I'm here, I'm here before you again. I was here last week, and I told you that we were at 187 deputies the afternoon. That same day, on the 7th, I received an email that said we were now at 186. So again, I represent the sworn deputy sheriffs, not the custodial deputy sheriffs. We're now at 186, we're allotted 209. One of the things I noticed in this presentation is they talked about a community within a community. So the custodial deputy sheriffs take care of the community within the jail, the inmates, the staff. My association takes care of the community outside of the jail, the entire county of Stanislas. I've been asked why I keep coming to these meetings, and one of the answers I give is it's an opportunity to speak to all five Board of Supervisors and the CEO in a public setting to let you know what's going on with our association. I'm not sure what the department, I'm not speaking on behalf of the department, I'm only speaking on behalf of our association. I'm not sure what they tell you, if you're getting these correct numbers. I can tell you that recently I was told that in 150 people that we recently hired, we've only kept about 21. So that's less than 25%. The turnover rate at the sheriff's department, our sheriff's department, is astonishing, to say the least. We have a hard time recruiting, and now we're having a hard time retaining or keeping people. So in less than a month, about a month's time, we've gone from 189 to 186. And I've told you guys this before, I really don't like coming here and telling you guys those numbers. I'd much rather say we're at 190, 195, 200, so that we can come up here and give you the presentations, just like the jail staff did, to say this is what we've been able to accomplish with manpower. Ultimately, we need manpower, and they need manpower. And again, it's up to you guys, there's only so much we can do, there's only so much the sheriff can do. At the end of the day, it's up to you guys to help us retain and keep what we have and recruit, so that we can get people and we can get up to that 209. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, for your comments. And next up is Brian Evett.
Hey, guys. Kenneth Brian Evett. Been in town my whole life. Anyway, I was brought up with a father that came out of the class, first class for sheriffs, is a private detective. This is what I got to say to you guys, okay? And the same thing, health and protection, even in our jails, is one of the major things. We talk about this, but what about contamination? Now, you can see my arms have spots all over them, because one day I'm arrested for trying to- arrest a burglar. Now I wind up with scabies from our own jail, which they should keep it clean. I made two appointments with this sheriff to talk about this. He's declined each one. And this isn't what we got these elected officials out here for. We got them out here so we could talk to them, that they can understand what happens in the public, you know? Now, just being a homeowner and having to deal with everything and a landlord, my rights have been taken away from me over and over again. No civil rights in this county, none. If you're a landlord, you might as well give it up. Because a criminal can say anything they want. This is more than a witch hunt and they take it in. They're called sheriffs, single-handedly enforcing the rights and fact-finding. That's the word then, fact-finding. If they just turn around and say, this burglar says that you're gonna threaten him, we're gonna arrest you. This is baloney because they're not even gathering facts. They're not looking at the health and safety when they put somebody in jail who's innocent. They just throw them in a pen with contaminated people. It's all on record, it's photographed. Why don't they check that out? That's where the death comes because now I'm in a friggin' lifelong death struggle because of what I was contaminated with in that jail for trying to arrest a burglar. My constitutional rights, which they take an oath to abide. Now, I don't care if we don't stop this and train these people to do this, you know, there's no way that we're gonna have a civilization that can hold itself together. And we're all part of it. And I don't really care. Stand up, make him take his appointment, make him listen to me, make him learn what the facts are. You can't be one-sided, otherwise it's just a witch hunt. In the same way, why would our jails even get this if they're not keeping control of it? You know, we talk about the death. You got an X-ray, they walk in with nothing, you're X-rayed. Now, how come they can't control that? They'll come to you guys, they'll want more manpower, they'll want more money, they'll want to up their budget. They'll arrest themselves and say, we busted this dispensary and it's all old marijuana. And then they'll ask you guys, look, it was a million-dollar bust. Isn't that nice? But there's no people involved? You can see the pictures, it's dusty. But what do you guys do? You give them another million dollars. All right, have a couple more men. Now we want to grow marijuana out on Crow's Landing. We got rid of our Humane Society out there that was given to us, the property was given to us, operated. Have the dogs and the cats be out there again. Take it, where's our pound? We gave them the land. They were given the land where the jail is. Do something, make it right. Don't put them, people in the kind of situation I am as a landlord, that we're the guilty party for what happens. Theft happens around our houses. If the thing's empty, people move in. We can't even go in and get them out. They can come in, heroin junkies can come in and change our locks and the sheriff will go, it's not my problem, as they turn around and rip everything off your property. And then you're the one at fault. Don't try to threaten to arrest that man because you'll go to jail. And that's the way they are. They won't even ask the person. Now, I want to know why we have to go through this. Is everybody having to go through this? I look at myself, how many times I've been through it over and over again. And I haven't done anything. And Boz knows for years, 15 years, I turn around and little vagrant girls on my property, a cop comes in, points weapons at me and my kids outside a gate after I let him in to go find out. So I went in with broken ribs, split liver, lost a kidney, hyperextended leg, hernias. My ear doesn't work right, a blown friggin' disc in my neck. What for? What for? That's the question. Is everybody gonna have to go through this just to be a landlord in this county? Because we have no protection, no rights? And you guys just sit here, oh, your time's up, but yet you can't get him to get me an appointment to talk to him? So this slander will stop? Because that's what we do. You guys keep slandering us and slandering, so wear us down and throw this slander in their reports. I mean, even in my hometown, up there at Tullock Lake, they turn around, they call up there and they slander me when I tried to make arrests on a man that was beating another man. I wound up going because of this county sent that information to them. They let the guy ride out of the friggin' truck. Here you can go, you can go free. Even it was on video, it was witnessed. We're gonna take you in because your hands are registered.
Thank you for your comments.
I mean, that's what it gets to be bullshit. And somebody's gotta do something about it and you're gonna hear from me constantly.
Thank you for your comments.
But don't shoot a guy who's on your side. Don't arrest a guy who's on your side. Because that's how I grew up, penal codes and law.
Brian, thank you for your comments.
And Christianity. And that's where it's at.
The last card I have for public comment. Any other public comment out there? Sheriff?
Make him give me an appointment. Backed out twice.
All right, good morning. Sheriff Dirksy, back again. I want to take an opportunity. I think all of you are aware that in the last few, last week, there were reports of ICE or more correctly Border Patrol in the valley. I think everybody's seen that on the media and it is a factual statement. They were in Kern County's Border Patrol specifically. And I don't have a whole lot of details beyond what's in the media, so I don't know why they were there. I'm not really sure how they, how they landed there. But that subsequently created a lot of understandable controversy, kind of on, on both ends of the spectrum, if you will. But, you know, late last week, we were seeing a lot of text posts on social media about Border Patrol or ICE being here in Stanislaus County and local law enforcement assisting them. Neither of those are known to be true. We do not have any reason to believe that they were actually here in Stanislaus County. And if they were, it was unbeknownst to us and there was certainly no assistance from any local law enforcement agency in our county. I know that Turlock PD and Modesto PD released statements over the weekend. We posted a video last night addressing this. And just a couple of things that I want to put on, on the radar. You know, this topic of immigration enforcement clearly generates strong opinions, again, kind of on both ends of the spectrum. And, and I certainly understand really both aspects of it. That being said, local law enforcement has no role in immigration enforcement. And I think that that is something that most people simply do not understand. And I want to reiterate that it is not something that we do. There is no state law that allows us to make arrests regarding immigration status. And exactly the opposite is actually the case. We're under SB 54, as we spoke about on December 17th, with that annual update. We're actually in most ways prohibited from working with ICE or any other federal agency around immigration specifically. And I think that just needs to be kind of reiterated across the community that local law enforcement has no role by statute in immigration enforcement. That does not mean that the federal agents, specifically ICE or Border Patrol, does not. They are duly charged federal agencies with their own legal authorities and it is something that they can do and we have no ability or authority to stop them. It's actually a federal crime to impede with any type of federal investigation. So I think, again, that also, that point needs to be reiterated. There's also something, though, that I think is important to put on the radar. And I think, I want to do this proactively because of the optics that I think it will create if and when the time comes. Obviously, in a week, there will be a new, you know, federal administration. We do probably all collectively expect that there will be some changes around the immigration aspect of things. And I would expect that you will probably see more of the activity that you saw in Kern County last week, again, without our, our participation. Here's where that is going to get tricky. And this is hypothetical, but I think it needs to just be out there for potential discussion amongst the community, not necessarily here at the board. But there could be scenarios where any of those federal agencies that come in for immigration enforcement, either there is an emergency situation where there is a threat to the community, maybe they're looking for somebody that's armed with a gun that is, you know, running from them and is out in the community. There could be state law violations that the federal agencies come across. Either of those type of situations, again, we're dealing with hypotheticals here, that could generate a response from local law enforcement. And so I think the key point to be made and understood here is that if that is the case, that does not mean that local law enforcement is assisting with immigration enforcement. We may be called to investigate, again, a violation of state law or some immediate threat to our community. Again, they come across somebody with a gun that's, you know, running out in the community. We will absolutely respond to that because that is a danger to everyone in our community. But I think it needs to be said before that hypothetical situation comes to pass because I understand what the optics would be. The optics would be that there is some immigration enforcement agency out there that is taking immigration enforcement. And if law enfor, local law enforcement, sheriff's deputies, Modesto PD, Turlock, whoever, has to respond to assist them for some right, some reason, the optics will be that we are doing immigration enforcement. And I just want to caution everyone not to jump to that conclusion because that is not an accurate conclusion. So I just, I think it's important to get that out in advance. I realize this is not an agendaized item, so we can't necessarily have discussion about it. I'm happy to come back for more discussion on that if the board so, so will that. But anyway, I just think it's important that that is out there because I do think that we could see that type of situation unfold at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other public comment? I'm gonna close, public comment. Move to consent calendar. Were you going to update that?
Yeah, we have item D1.
Five D1.
Yeah, 5D1. That'll, we'll be taking that one off and to not be heard today.
Was there any other?
Any other board members? Before the board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any other matter on the consent calendar? Stephen, I know you'd put in for 5D1 to make a comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I was in support, I am in support of 5D1, even though I know it is pulled. It's an issue that does need to be addressed and the ad hoc committee is a good way to start. But I realize there are other technical issues involved that prevent us from moving forward with it. Because the problem of people using land designated for agriculture for other purposes has been happening in my community of Keys and I know it's throughout the county. And we need to come up with a specific standard on what's allowed and what isn't allowed so we can basically punish the people who don't follow the rules and assist the people that do follow the rules. Because last month, we had two board items postponed because of this. One was not following the rules and, but unfortunately, someone who was trying to follow all the rules got penalized as well. So that's just what I wanted to basically bring up, that it's important work that needs to be taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And I'll bring it back to the board for a motion other than 5D1.
I'll make a motion. I just want to comment that it'll come very soon. So, the committee.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing to consider adoption of resolutions approving the 2024 Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Amendment and the submittal of the first periodic evaluation for the Eastern San Joaquin Sub Basin Environmental Resources. Christie McKinnon and of course Rob Costlet.
Good morning, honorable board members, Chairman Condit, CEO Hayes, and, oops, Council Boz. Today, I'm gonna be presenting on the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sub Basin 2024 Groundwater Sustainability Plan Amendment. I am Christie McKinnon. I'm Water Resources Manager in the Groundwater Resources Division of the Department of Environmental Resources. The purpose of this presentation today is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval and adoption of the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sub Basin 2024 Groundwater Sustainability Plan Amendment. Our Department of Environmental Resources staff recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval and adoption of the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sub Basin 2024 Groundwater Sustainability Plan Amendment by resolution and to approve the first periodic evaluation for the Eastern San Joaquin Sub Basin, to authorize the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority, its consultants and the plan manager to submit the amended plan and periodic evaluation to the Department of Water Resources by no later than January 29, 2025, and to implement the purpose of these resolutions. Just a brief update on the GSP implementation status. The initial plan was submitted January 29, 2020, as required for high priority critically overdrafted basins. On January 28, 2022, the department provided an incomplete determination and a notice to the sub basin to address two planned deficiencies required in order to prevent state intervention. On July 27, 2022, a revised plan was submitted to the state. And on July 6, 2023, the sub basin received approval from the state with the recommendation to address eight deficiencies. And the sub basin has been working closely with the state to complete these corrective A periodic evaluation of the groundwater sustainability plans are required every five years to evaluate the adopted plans and upon amendment to the plans in order to provide a status update on the groundwater conditions, an update on meeting interim milestones and measurable objectives, an update on project and management action implementation, and to describe any unforeseen challenges. The plan amendment and first periodic evaluation together will address the state's eight recommended corrective actions. The eight recommended corrective actions from the state included providing additional justification on selection of the groundwater level minimum threshold and undesirable result criteria, to revise the subsidence sustainable management criteria using direct subsidence field monitoring data, to update the sub basin water budgets using a recalibrated model, to revise the estimate for reduction in groundwater storage volume and its undesirable result definition, to provide additional justification for the 2,000 milligram per liter chloride isocontour line, and to revise the interconnected surface water criteria and monitoring network, to improve the monitoring network for groundwater quality, and a recommendation to provide additional analysis on chloride levels by developing a chloride isocontour line in the western portion of the sub basin. It's best to explain how the sub basin addressed these recommendations by separating them into topic. The respective topics are groundwater levels, water quality, subsidence, interconnected surface waters, modeling, groundwater storage, and the need to develop and implement demand management and domestic well mitigation plans. So in order to address the issues with respect to groundwater levels, the groundwater level minimum thresholds were adjusted to the 2015 levels, which are the levels, the lowest levels after Sigma implement, or after the Sigma law went into effect, like we've seen in the other sub basins, as well as completing a domestic well impact analysis in order to justify the selected sustainable management criteria. The analysis demonstrated that an estimated 6% of domestic wells would possibly go dry if 25% or five of the wells in the representative monitoring network dropped below the selected thresholds. So even if 10 wells dropped below the thresholds, the impacts would be less than 2% impacts to wells in the sub basin. A domestic well impact mitigation program was developed and approved by the sub basin GSAs on September 2022. GSAs on September 11th, 2024. In addition, additional mapping, um, was completed based on recent nature conservancy guidelines to update and reflect additional guidance for groundwater dependent ecosystems. And the updated modeling demonstrated that the 25% threshold selected for groundwater level undesirable results would also be protective of groundwater dependent ecosystems. The sub basin GSAs fully realize that they're responsible for obtaining and analyzing additional data and to take action to prevent undesirable results to these groundwater dependent ecosystems. In order to address concerns related to groundwater quality and the potential for seawater intrusion into the sub basin, the GSAs refined the existing monitoring network and established criteria for chloride and agreed to monetize, monitor levels for water quality instead of seawater intrusion because seawater intrusion is not applicable to our sub basin. And we know that the delta is considered to be freshwater. So we just kind of changed, um, the method for analyzing and, um, monitoring this data. The new chloride criteria, um, established, um, a threshold of 250 parts per million, and that would be protective of seawater intrusion anyways. And we know based on the existing data in our monitoring network that less than 15% of existing wells exceed this amount. The GSAs agree to report trends in groundwater level quality annually and will address, um, any issues that arise if conditions get worse. So regarding subsidence, um, subsidence has not historically been an issue in this sub basin. And instead of using groundwater levels as a proxy, the GSAs agreed to use direct field monitoring data to set subsidence minimum thresholds and evaluate any impacts. The new subsidence monitoring network was established based on in-site data for satellite imagery and extensometer data used to measure soil compaction. In addition, um, the Eastern San Joaquin Water Resources Model was updated with the latest data, including data, um, for trends in land use, urban water management model stratigraphy. The model was modified to, um, have updates regarding projected condition baselines, including with climate change and project management action scenarios. And this updated data was used to address the recommended correction actions from the Department of Water Resources. A new undesirable result needed to be established for groundwater storage. And the GSAs decided to continue to use groundwater levels as a proxy, but included additional information, including a range of 10 to 13 million acre feet, um, to allow for model uncertainty and for variation in pumping rates, climate, climate impacts, and variations based on locations to establish as a threshold for exceedances. These levels are based on upper and lower bounds of groundwater level minimum threshold scenario analysis. And the undesirable results are now linked to storage levels when minimum thresholds are exceeded under the projected condition baselines. A new monitoring network was developed because the sub basin needs additional data to explain the relationships between groundwater levels and interconnected surface waters. The monitoring network uses groundwater as the metric to measure depletions. And the sub basin GSAs have been working really closely with the Department of Water Resources because new guidance has been developed recently. And that guidance will be used to further refine the GSP procedures, analysis, and ensure compliance with the GSP regulations in the near future. So the preference is still to rely on the projects to help the sub basin achieve sustainability goals. But there is a need for a demand management program. Again, this will be a backstop to arrest overdraft if necessary. Because there's a need to be able to focus on local reductions within the basin in addition to addressing basin-wide overdraft conditions. The demand management policy and implementation program will have to be developed by December 31st, 2027 to be ready to implement if needed, no later than December 31st, 2028. The second additional needed management action was the need to establish a domestic well mitigate, make it mitigation program. To be, there is a backstop to provide mitigation for any domestic wells that may fail over the implementation horizon due to management activities after January 1st, 2015. The sub basin GSAs have committed to establishing an initial fund of $200,000 and will complete outreach across the sub basin to publicize the program. The program will focus on providing emergency interim and permanent water, safe drinking water supplies. And a technical committee will evaluate claims and recommend how to mitigate or deny any claims to the sub basin steering committee and the claimant. The public hearing date for consideration of adoption of the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Amendment and 2025 periodic evaluation was set for action for today on December 3rd, 2024. The date of the public hearing was published in the Modesto P on December 29th, 2024 and January 1st, 2025 in compliance with the government code. So once again, our staff recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval and adoption of the Eastern San Joaquin Sub Basin 2024 GSP Plan Amendment by resolution and to approve the first periodic evaluation for the sub basin. To authorize the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority, its consultants and the plan manager to submit the amended plan and periodic evaluation to the Department of Water Resources by no later than January 29th, 2025 and implement the purpose of these resolutions. We're very happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Kristi. Bring it back to the board.
So much for keeping it simple. This is so complicated. I, I look at everyone's faces out there and you lose everyone because we're talking about things that are, uh, that, that the doctors and people with PhDs are, are dealing with. And we also have a letter here today that we received that's almost like a book regarding, you know, these things. I, I know we have to do, uh, these plans and generally, we just have to follow along because we're not doing the work on the ground. And it ends up before us, it's very difficult for me to question any of the, uh, the, the agreements or how they came about. But we need to simplify this process because this is going to continue and it's getting more and more complicated in these areas where they don't have surface water much easier and, and the Modesto sub basin, the Turlock sub basin. But either that or I gotta learn more because this is, this is really, really difficult stuff. So it's not a question, I'm sorry, that's a comment.
Okay, Kristi, thank you. Rob, thank you guys for doing this. And like Vito said, this is intense stuff. Have we gotten any, um, feedback, um, with, from DWR with regard to these eight corrective actions that we're proposing here? Is this going to do it, we think? Or do, where's that stand? Like, have you worked with them as you've been preparing these?
Yeah, so, so across, um, the state, the sub basins, they've been working very closely with department staff because additional guideline, guidances come out. And everybody wants to make sure that we're going down the same path before making the commitment and the investment and expending the energy to correct some of these deficiencies. So the good news is, is that when we started, there was only a couple of staff members working statewide. But now the state has a whole Sigma department. And they've, um, been very proactive to cooperatively work with the various sub basins in order to, I mean, they can't say that this will do it, but what they say is, this is reasonable.
Okay. Cause, cause I know we submitted, uh, we've done this in Modesto sub basin too. I think they're down to their last one here. Any update on that one, on the Modesto sub basin? Is that one, have we, have we heard back on that one?
So, um, we were provided an update and the state is hoping to provide their determination before the end of February for Modesto and Turlock.
Okay. Okay. And if that one fails again, that's like our third strike, right? With, with Modesto sub basin or our second, a second?
Then the takeover occurs.
Yeah, then the takeover occurs. And so that's why I'm, it, it sounds like the approach has changed a little bit here now as compared to we submit, they turned it down, sent it back to us and they're submitting eventually then a takeover. Sounds like they're trying to actually work with us now and make sure that what we submit is something that's going to work for them as compared to, yeah, just denying it and saying, okay, now you're done.
Absolutely.
Okay. And it is, it's very frustrating for everybody involved. But I appreciate the work you guys, and there's not, like Vito said, there's not a thing we can do at this point, and we knew this was coming. And so anyway, I appreciate your guys' efforts.
All right. I'm going to open public hearing and I'm going to acknowledge the written comments that we have. Anybody that'd like to speak in regard to this agendized item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, approve staff recommendations.
Second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Unanimous. Discussion items, acceptance of the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan, planning and community development. Angela Freitas and Kristen Anaya.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Boz, I'm Angela Freitas, the county's planning director. And it's a pleasure to be here this morning to request acceptance of this board of the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan. This plan got its formal start on May of 2022 with the board's acceptance of the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant from the California Department of Transportation. However, the road leading to this plan began in the years before in response to Modesto's downtown planning efforts and the efforts to improve the Twalome River Regional Park in the area south of the Ninth Street Corridor. The plan was also driven by actions that came before this board involving a scrap metal business that called into question the appropriate land uses for the corridor and the need to revisit compatibility and the uses along the corridor. Having grown up in Stanislaus County, I'm very aware of the negative reputation that the South Ninth Street Corridor has held for decades. And as your planning director, I'm in a fortunate position to be able to look beyond the reputation and to look at the potential. The corridor plan that is before you this morning focuses on the corridor's potential, setting a foundation for us to do better because we need to do better. Here this morning to present the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan is our own senior planner, Kristen Anaya, Sonia Antoine with Fear &amp; Pierce, and Tony Leonard with Civic Well. And I'll turn the floor over to them.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Kristen Anaya, and as Angela mentioned, I'm a planner with the county planning department. So as Angela mentioned, Stanislaus County partnered with a nonprofit Civic Well to submit an application for the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Transportation Planning Grant. The Sustainable Communities Transportation Planning Grant is intended for, to award projects, uh, planning projects that will aim to reduce greenhouse gas reduction, um, and achieve state climate goals, enhance the transportation, active transportation network, um, and promote infill development, including development of housing. The planning grant was awarded to the county and Civic Well with the consultant team of Fear &amp; Pierce and Placework selected through a competitive RFP process. Work began on the project in November of 2023 and will be completed by February of 2025. The corridor plan, uh, is a vision document intended to guide development of a focused area by offering recommendations and implementation measures typically with an overall goal of enhancing safety, um, improving connectivity, promoting economic growth, and, uh, land use compatibility. So specifically this project, um, the project area that was chosen to be studied, uh, is the one and a quarter mile stretch of South Ninth Street from the Twalome River Bridge Crossing to East Hatch Road and encompassing all of the areas between, um, uh, the Southern Pacific Railroad on the east side of South Seventh Street and Bystrom Road. So it's that area bounded in red on the screen. Uh, the South Ninth Street Corridor was chosen as a target area for the, this plan due to its importance as a regional resource, um, as a major connecting point between downtown Modesto, State Route 99, and the city of Series. The plan area is located in unincorporated Stanislaus County, but is located within the city of Series, uh, LAFCO-adopted sphere of influence and is bound, uh, by the city of Modesto to the north and then city of Series to the south. Land within the study area is predominantly designated industrial and commercial in the county's, uh, general plan land use and zoning maps. However, while the majority of the property is owned commercial, land uses within the corridor are predominantly industrial in nature. The areas surrounding the corridor consist of downtown Modesto to the north, uh, the Bystrom neighborhood, which includes Mancini Park and Twalome Elementary School to the east, and the city of Series to the south and South Seventh Street, as well as additional residential, commercial, and industrial land uses to the west. In terms of destinations within the corridor, there are very few retail grocery and restaurant opportunities that exist within the plan area itself. Further, limited to no sidewalks or bikelines exist, um, in the corridor area with most of the pedestrian walkways occurring as fragmented sidewalks interspersed with gravelled shoulder buffered by a curb rather than the traditional ADA compliant raised sidewalk curb and gutter. Only two signalized crossings exist along South Ninth Street and only two crosswalks exist to facilitate pedestrian traffic across Ninth Street, um, along the southern half of the plan area. Other known issues within the corridor area include flooding, obstacles within pedestrian pathways, speeding, um, and properties not meeting or not compliant with the current standards for the county's ordinance. These are other images of the corridor where you can see issues related to connectivity for bicyclists, transit users, and pedestrians, uh, poor drainage as a result of grade differences between the right of way and private property, um, aesthetic issues, uh, and land use interface Other transportation-related projects in the area consist of the ACE train extension from La Croix to Series, uh, which will include ACE train connections at the existing Modesto Transit Center. Additionally, the Seventh Street Bridge is currently in the process of reconstruction with construction anticipated to begin this year and will ultimately facilitate, um, heavier truck traffic on that Seventh Street Bridge. And I'll pass it over to Tony.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this project. My name is Tony Leonard, uh, project manager with the nonprofit Civic Well. And I just wanted to, can we give you a quick overview of the engagement activities that happened during this process? We tried to use various methods to engage people during the project. You know, we had a project webpage where people could, uh, provide inputs. Uh, we surveyed businesses along there to kind of get a feel for what their main concerns were as far as issues and what types of improvements they might like to see. Uh, we had an advisory group that helped guide the project and provided, uh, input on the final recommendations as ever developed. Part of the process was to hold kind of a two-day community design shared where we had various activities at different times and different levels, uh, which entailed a small stakeholder meetings, a walk audit to actually look at the conditions on the ground along the corridor, pop up at the Salvation Army Center. And this was done in the spring of last year. Uh, and then we wrapped that up with a workshop to actually present to the draft plan to the public and get their input on the recommendations that would be in the final plan. That was done last fall. Uh, so you can see, you know, we provided small, had small group working sessions where we provided opportunities for people to identify the issues, the locations, and their own ideas on improvements within the corridor. Uh, the photos are an example of the walking audit that we did, uh, just kind of looking at the various conditions, um, you know, see the bicyclists along the roadway there. And then we did engage various stakeholders, uh, very, um, many representatives from the county offices, uh, from the city of Series and Modesto, uh, representatives from, uh, South Modesto Municipal Advisory Council, Twalome Elementary School, of course, businesses and residents in the kind of the adjacent neighborhoods along the corridor. Uh, we tried to apply various outreach methods to get the word out about the events and the activities that were happening, you know, flyers, um, and business surveys through direct mail, email, um, using the electronic billboard, uh, for the county, uh, the parent portal for Twalome Elementary and Modesto City Schools, uh, various media sources, and then we also had an online mapping tool where people could provide direct input at specific locations. Um, and I, we, all of the materials that we produced during the outreach engagement were in both English and Spanish to try to make sure we, try to get representatives of population that might not necessarily participate in these government, uh, meetings and events. Uh, and so we had kind of over a hundred and ten responses, um, the engagement activities, and, you know, Kristin kind of already went through some concerns that were, you know, traffic safety, uh, concerns definitely with, for pedestrians and bicyclists specifically, uh, high traffic levels, personal safety, flooding, uh, then the unsightly properties and kind of substandard infrastructure that Kristin pointed out. So I'll pass it back to Kristin so that she can kind of show what the results were with that.
Thank you. Um, so based on the input we reserved, received during this process from residents, business representatives, agency staff, and other stakeholders, um, the following guiding, guiding principles have been developed to guide the recommendations that are offered in the corridor plan, uh, and these include increasing and improving connections to and from South Ninth Street, including the neighborhoods to the east, the Twalome River to the north, um, and to the commercial opportunities in downtown Modesto and on Hatch Road, uh, improve roadway safety for all mode users, um, provide comfortable facilities for walking and biking, uh, provide green infrastructure such as rain gardens and green stormwater retention, uh, to help alleviate ponding, improve corridor aesthetics through landscape, streetscape, and facade improvements, uh, support a diverse mix of land uses that serve the needs of both residents and workers within and near the corridor, and to increase the sense of safety for users within the corridor. And to achieve these principles, land use and transportation recommendations were developed for the planned area. So I'll go over the land use recommendations, um, which include land use changes, uh, within the corridor, focusing on changes in, um, land use which would accommodate, accompany, uh, zoning changes, uh, with the intent to transition existing properties along South Ninth Street north of State Route 99 from industrial to commercial mixed use and residential land uses, um, while maintaining industrial anchors on the west side of the corridor. Uh, these recommended zoning changes intend to support lesser intensity uses developing in areas that would create a smoother transition between the existing industrial land uses and the neighborhoods to the east. Uh, in support of, in guiding residential and commercial development that could occur within the corridor, the plan also identifies design guidelines for new development that would enhance aesthetics and safety, promote uniformity in development, um, and, uh, promote ease of access to and from private development within the corridor. The corridor plan also, uh, includes conceptual activity nodes at three specific intersections along South Ninth Street. Due to these intersections' potential, uh, to activate the rest of the corridor and catalyze further development, the intersections at River, Hosmer, and Sonora were targeted for land use and transportation infrastructure changes to create destinations that would draw more people into the corridor and in turn hopefully spur, uh, development activity along the rest of the corridor. Uh, the nodes include conceptual land uses which would support the guiding principles established in the plan. And so the first of these three activity nodes is the intersection at River Road and South Ninth Street. Uh, land use and transportation infrastructure changes include, uh, creating a signalized intersection, uh, supporting safe pedestrian crossings, and allowing the removal of the existing bridge underpass, um, zoning properties to allow multifamily and residential development and open space opportunities north of the River Road, um, to take advantage of, uh, the existing river and its scenic properties, um, and supporting, uh, mixed use and commercial retail destinations, uh, south of the River Road intersection. So at Hosmer and Ninth Street, uh, the concept is to implement a new signalized intersection with pedestrian crossings, um, have commercial and retail destinations which include the reuse of notable industrial, uh, buildings on the east side of Ninth Street, um, allow, uh, medium-density residential along Bystrom Road, and integrate, uh, green infrastructure on private areas along public streets. At Sonora and South Ninth Street, one concept that the plan explores is creating a new east-west connection at Sonora Avenue between Ninth Street and Bystrom Road at such a time it becomes feasible, um, create a new signalized intersection after that connection to Sonora, um, Avenue is made, um, and then activate that intersection, uh, by, um, allowing neighborhood commercial and retail land uses on the east side of South Ninth Street. Um, this concept also includes retaining any historical buildings such as the landmark Ocean Building on the west side of South Ninth Street and providing, um, public plazas and outdoor dining. Um, it also, uh, recommends, uh, implementing bus stops with shelters within public spaces. And so to go over the transportation recommendations, I'll pass it all along to Sonia.
Hi, chairs, member of the board. Uh, my name is Sonia Anthoine, I'm a transportation planner with Farron Pierce, uh, part of the consultant team for this effort. Um, so here to talk about the transportation recommendations as part of this plan, uh, which were made heavily in tandem with the land use recommendations discussed. Uh, two key focuses for the recommendations are based on the guiding principles of safety and connectivity. So the two figures we're showing here on screen first are the walking and biking facility recommendations. Left figure shows the pedestrian recommendations which consist of a phased approach to adding wide-paved pedestrian areas along the main South Ninth Street Corridor to provide an inviting space for pedestrians, employees, and visitors alike, as well as key east-west connections to the residential neighborhood to the east of the corridor. In order to safely cross South Ninth Street, uh, as Kristin alluded to, we're also recommending new marked crossing opportunities based on locations of new traffic signals. These signals would also have the added benefit of slowing down traffic and controlling that traffic. In the right figure, we're showing a facilities plan for people bicycling, including shared-use paths, bike lanes, and bike routes. You'll see there's some overlapping colors with the left where facilities could be used by both bikes and pedestrians. Next slide, please, thank you. Um, so due to the high traffic volumes, actually over twenty thousand vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians per day by our accounts, um, and the long distances between existing crossings, we recommended installing several traffic signals to provide more control and crossing opportunities at key streets. These intersection changes would come hand in hand with those land use changes. Uh, we're also recommending upgrading the existing signalized intersections coordinated with the new signals and new pedestrian walk signals as well as ramps to make them ADA accessible. Another big piece of the puzzle that we're showing on the right-hand side of the screen, um, is the corridor's connection to State Route 99 on the south side. Additional intersection reconstruction would be needed to slow northbound speeds exiting SR 99 where the roadway context should change from a freeway into this business center So in considering the transportation facility connections we wanted to make, we looked closer at how these would translate into design concepts. We brought several cross-sections to the advisory group, which included county engineering staff to receive feedback on the preferred alternative, and the options that we're showing here were almost unanimously selected. In these cross-sections, which entirely utilize county right-of-way, we keep two lanes of vehicle traffic in each direction and use the additional space for shared-use areas for bikes and pedestrians, trees, street furniture, and streetlights. And this final rendering, um, shows off our vision for the South Ninth Street Corridor. Some of these various features include that wide shared-use area I was mentioning earlier, uh, fronting businesses, the street trees and stormwater retention planters near the curb to mitigate some of the flooding and drainage issues, the race intermediates with streetlights and landscaping to beautify the corridor, as well as bus bays, um, at StanRTA bus stop locations for buses to pull out of the flow of traffic in order to pick up and drop off passengers.
And so to cover some of the non-transportation or land use, uh, measures that, um, recommendations within the plan that would support the goals of the corridor plan, um, these include supporting activity within the corridor through promotion and expansion of safe routes to school programs, um, having local craft fairs and market events to draw more users into the corridor, um, enforcement of traffic safety through increased, um, sheriff and CHP presence or speed metering mechanisms at high collision locations would also be a critical component. Um, and as well, uh, exploring ways to maintain features of the corridor within the public right-of-way such as landscaping or, um, lighting would also be important, and some, uh, options that could be considered is establishment of, for example, a maintenance assessment district. Exploring ways to, uh, support placemaking and, uh, also to, um, uh, promote, uh, local art initiative programs, uh, such as mural programs that would allow public art to be created within the corridor. And so the corridor plan is intended to set the blueprint and vision of what the desired look of South Ninth Street, um, is in the future. In terms of implementing this vision, it will require, you know, applicable land use policies and public improvements to set the stage to encourage long-term, um, private investment driven by private development. Um, next steps on the county side, uh, towards beginning implementing the planned principles, um, would include supporting code enforcement, sheriff's office, and other county enforcement staff to address noncompliant properties, bringing them into compliance through, um, code enforcement and permitting processes that already exist, identifying and adopting the priority, uh, performance standards that are identified in the design guidelines proposed by the plan, um, either applying these guidelines to development as, uh, you know, recent applications are submitted, or it could be incorporated as text amendments to the county's zoning code as it becomes, um, feasible to implement. Um, and then also working with developers, informing them and supporting them, um, in their process and encourage, um, and to them to spur development within the corridor. On the transportation side of things, um, there are grants and funding sources available as a next step that can be pursued to, um, do some of the quick build roadway treatments identified in the planned document, um, and then county staff can also begin engineering work and, um, kind of the coordination work necessary, um, including with Caltrans to look at advancing redesign of that, uh, northbound State Route 99 off-ramp intersection, um, and then looking at, you know, funding sources to implement some of the priority projects in the transportation infrastructure recommendations. And so that concludes our, uh, recommenda-, our, our presentation. Staff recommends that the board accept the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan and authorize the directors of planning, community development, and public works to pursue appropriate actions necessary to carry out the guiding principles of the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan. Um, the corridor plan is available on the county's website as well as through the project website available through the link on the screen, and, and staff and the project team is available for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Bring it back to the board for any questions.
Hi, Kristen. Um, do you feel like the, uh, you had good turnout for your meetings? You had, uh, like, the advisory group meetings and, and the outreach, do you think, do you feel like you've been through this before? Was it better than average, or?
I would say, yeah, it was better than average, you know, it was always kind of, you know, we'd hope for more involvement from the local businesses within the corridor, but we did get, um, a number of people at each of the shared activities that, um, it was, you know, encouraging to see, and we got a lot of good feedback.
That's great, and Angela, I appreciate your initial comment of seeing what the potential is because I think there's a lot of potential there. I love this plan. And again, I, I think by putting in medians and, and some traffic signals and connecting Sonora Road, I think you, there's just so much potential there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A wonderful presentation. I, I definitely think we're on the right track here. This is exciting. I think this is going to be a new, uh, just, uh, jolt of life in the South Ninth Street, something that the community is incredibly excited about. Uh, I had the pleasure of attending some of those community meetings. It was definitely well-attended. I was happy to be there and interact with the community members, um, and I, I just, I appreciate the flexibility and the open-mindedness and, and as far as zoning goes, and the mixed use, uh, the residential, the commercial, that all excites me. I, again, this is gonna, uh, revolutionize the South Ninth Street, and it's gonna, uh, put it on a course, uh, that is gonna be, uh, both beneficial for the community and beneficial for our county overall in the future. Uh, so I absolutely support this. Um, I would just stay on the course of flexibility and open-mindedness and also collaboration with the community, but excellent work, and this is something to be proud of and excited about.
Yeah, I will echo the sentiments, um, uh, that, um, I feel that the community got an opportunity. Unfortunately, it wasn't as robust, but on some of the meetings it was. I know we had a walking tour supervisor, Chance Condon and I, and it seemed that there was a lot of energy behind that. It was a small but mighty number and many people waiting many, many years to see something happen there. So not only is something happening, I think it's going to be to the benefit of the community, uh, not on the, only the beautification process, but really making it a thorough fair of commerce and, um, you know, beautifying it in, in, in the process. So, s- super supportive of this. I appreciate the presentation, appreciate the work that was put in, uh, to get this presentation ready and, uh, something that we can see and make a decision and hopefully, uh, amplify to the community that things are happening in that region or that area.
Okay, most of my questions here were answered by Chances and, um, and Manny's responses, um, here. Yeah, I was just concerned about public participation. It sounds like we had good, good participation, and, um, that's great. Um, I mean, this is obviously going to be transformational for this area, and I just, it's, it's just, um, just gotta find the money now at this point to make this work, but, um, boy, it'd be great if we could get this going. And the only thing I was thinking, and I don't know if Rebecca Harrington got, was here, she would have been here today for this presentation, and it's too bad she's not, and, um, but yeah, I'm sure she's looking down and seeing what's happening here, and so, um, thank you guys very much, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It's a great plan. I do have one question. The signals, I hate stop-and-go traffic. Why not like something like roundabouts or something that keeps traffic flowing? I know we want to slow it down, and I know that's probably a high-traffic area where there's a lot of accidents, but it...
Yeah, happy to answer as the resident transportation planner for the day. Um, so usually we recommend roundabouts when there is a balance between the two directions of travel, rather the, say, east-west and north-south.
Okay.
Um, because the side streets have such a low amount of volume compared to this Ninth Street area, um, think twenty thousand vehicles a day compared to two hundred, um, on a side street, uh, prioritizing that main movement and still seeing it as a, you know, a commercial corridor needing, in this transitionary period, four lanes of vehicle travel, um, and then using signals as a way to control that traffic. Um, and then those kind of key touchpoints allow for you to, you could call it a green wave, for example, where, you know, when you're flowing nicely along a corridor, everyone's going the correct speed and the green is going, so.
I see Dave Lehman approaching.
The actual resident.
Dave Lehman, uh, Public Works Director. Um, I agree with you, uh, Chair, uh, Condit, the, um, nobody likes stopping at signals. And so I was just talking to Andrew, we'll make sure, because we'll control these signals that, um, they're coordinated when the time comes. So hopefully, you know, in the peak hour direction certainly, um, get one green, hopefully you get the green all the way to the bridge. So going north or vice versa, going south. So that, that would be the idea is to coordinate these signals. Um, just thought I'd share that. And Public Works is a big fan of this. Um, there are some decisions we can make on the, um, interim project that we've got, uh, sixty percent plans for. Um, I think staff, Andrew and I would recommend eliminate on-street parking and go ahead and do bike lanes and pit space today. Um, there's plenty of parking out there on these lots, so that, that would kind of be our recommendation, but that would be a decision for you guys, uh, in a future time.
And would those signal lights be, um, equipped with optocom signals?
Cameras, yeah, and then, then they'd all talk to each other, and so little, uh, short, like, basically mini Wi-Fi network.
More specifically for emergency vehicles?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They can change it.
Right, yeah, they, all our signals come with that now.
Okay.
Smoking from a true fireman.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, I'll, uh, open up public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on the side? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Ron McMurtry here. Excellent presentation. Um, I, I don't know, in the past few years I've become interested in various infrastructure projects, and this one wasn't on my radar. Is there any, uh, this was a lot of information, and I gathered a lot of interesting facts, but I think I missed some details. Is there, uh, a website or a, a packet where that I can look over the details in more, in more detail?
Uh, yes, you can go to the, visit the project website and view, um, a copy of the plan, or you can go to the, um, board agenda item.
What's the website?
Um, it's actually available, it's, so, bit.ly slash S Ninth Street ST.
Wait, where is it, where is it, where is it? Where is it?
Also scan the QR code.
I don't see this thing up there. Oh, B-I-T dot, oh, thank you very much. Okay. All right, thank you very much. My other question is, since I, this wasn't on my radar, I guess this next question's probably for Chief Hayes. I'm very curious about funding sources. What were the funding sources for this project? I, that, see, I know we're later on than that, so that's why I said maybe Chief Hayes is the one to answer this.
Yeah, I'm not going to be the best. I'm not necessarily going to be the best person to answer that. Between our planning and Public Works team, do you want to comment on funding for projects like this?
Oh, maybe David Wright, okay.
So the funding for the planned document itself is through Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant Program. As far as funding sources for implementing the various recommendations in the plan, that's kind of TBD. There are various funding sources, also, you know, grants that kind of are meant to kind of coincide with the planning documents that follow the ones under the Sustainable Communities Grant Program through Caltrans. And there's other sources. The planned document does identify kind of a suite of different various funding sources that can be applied for.
Sounds like I'm not familiar with a lot of those, maybe this is why it wasn't on my radar. Okay, thank you very much.
Steve. Dave, you had another comment?
Just about funding sources, the Phase One project will be funded with RMRA SB1 funds. And so those are road rehabilitation funds, and so we'll, I mean, the payment out there is beat, so we need to do a payment project, and we're talking about doing some interim pit improvements at the same time, if we're going to make some decisions. So that's kind of, just thought I'd share that real quick. RMRA.
Thank you, Dave. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Morrow, and I'm actually more commenting on your recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is on roundabouts versus traffic signals. It all looks and depends on what your ultimate vision for the corridor is, but if you're trying to enhance pedestrian traffic as well as vehicle traffic, roundabouts don't work well for pedestrians at all. In that case, we would have to have the signalized crossings. So that's another thing to look at as you move forward, if you want to try to enhance the pedestrian traffic on it, you're pretty much going to have to go with traffic signals compared to the roundabouts, and that's just what I wanted to throw in. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for your comments. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, bring it back to the Board for any more comments or motions.
Make a motion to approve if there's no further comments.
Second. You got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Correspondents. Acknowledged, received, and correspondents are further recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports. Any Board reports?
I just want to point out, there's the devastating fires that are still occurring down Palisades, and the Palisades Fire, and the Eaton Fire. I talked with Eric Clubmeyer earlier, Chief Clubmeyer. He said that we had 12 engines, a strike team leader, and trainee, so units from Burbank Paradise, Daenerys, City of Modesto, City Patterson, Stanislaus Consolidated, City of Turlock, Turlock Rural, West Stanislaus, and Woodland Avenue all have strike teams down there. So again, keep me in your thoughts and prayers, and appreciate so much everyone banding together.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Any other reports? Seeing none. Legislative Fiscal Management report.
So we'd like to acknowledge that the Governor's Office did release their January budget proposal for this upcoming fiscal year, and they released that on last Friday. And generally, it looks like a pretty status quo budget with respect to impacts to counties generally, although it does seem like it's more of kind of a holding pattern budget proposal with numerous potential impacts that are kind of out there. And as mentioned, you were just referring to the emergency response and fires in Los Angeles that definitely have the potential for economic impact statewide. We also have concerns about things like insurance availability, obviously, and also cost and anticipation of possible federal policy impacts now that we have a new administration in Washington that'll be seated here pretty soon. So there's a lot going on there that could potentially have impacts that flow that are not available at this time. I do want to note that the Governor's proposed, or proposed budget did have some more optimistic assumptions around some of our realignment revenues, which was good news for us to see. So we want to look a little bit more at that and see if maybe we can reach that same level of optimism, because those realignment revenues definitely have impacts to many of our county departments and programs that we operate here. So that was positive. And then just one other note of interest, the Governor has a proposal to centralize housing and homeless services into one new state department. So they're definitely looking at a kind of a different structure, and we're already seeing in some of our grant-funded programs for homelessness, the state making some changes in some of the historical or traditional methods upon which they've distributed some of those funds are already starting to change there. So I can expect to see, or we can expect to see at least some modifications there, but particularly interested to see what this single state department, how it's structured, organized, and then how it connects to counties, which is where a majority of these funds flow through. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, Deputy Fisher, thank you for your overwatch back there, and we're going to adjourn the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting and reconvene to sit as the in-home supportive services public authority of Stanislaus. Counsel, you have a report on closed session.
Yes, we have a closed session today, sitting as the in-home supportive services public authority. We, the closed session is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Christine Huber, Ryan Leib, and Jonah Navarro, and we need to add Patrice Dietrich to that list. The labor organization is the in-home supportive services, UDWA. With that appropriate for public comment. Seeing none.
Seeing none. Adjourn to closed session.